4:30, the meeting will come to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the meeting room on the east wall. Well, it's back there. My understanding is that this is still the earlier version, but you have a new one. You're going to be changing it.
Right.
Plus, we have a written copy of the new one on the corner of the desk.
We just got the poster today.
Right.
And I had to backroll it, so we're waiting to be able to get it.
So we'll hope to put it in there by the next meeting.
Correct.
All right. So, um, the next item is roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Um, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, so we'll go over the announcements. Um, many of you have heard this several times, but let me say it anyway. We want to say welcome to everyone that's here and especially any new, um, visitors. Um, we want to remind all that this meeting is being recorded to be broadcast at a later date. So remember that whoever is here and wants to speak, be sure that you come forward to the microphone when it's time for you to, to come up and when you're recognized. Uh, we also will need for you to state your name for the record and spell your name, which will assist the clerk as she types her minutes. Um, remember no swearing or any, uh, other inappropriate language. Um, we all need to check our cell phones, try and be sure that they're either turned off or on silent.
Russ?
So that we, uh, don't get ourselves in trouble.
Sound off.
Um, want to also remind the commissioners to splea- to speak clearly and loud into your microphones, um, so that, uh, we can hear you as well for the recording. Uh, depending on how long this meeting lasts, we might end up taking a, a break in the middle. Normally that's an eight-minute recess, uh, midway through, but we'll see how long this meeting lasts tonight. We may or may not need that. Um, and, um, the other thing, um, that I will mention, it's not exactly an executive session, so I would say it now, but at the end of this meeting, we do have a detention center tour and, um, we'll be going to the detention center for that, um, after this meeting, but it'll be part of this meeting. So, um, we'll be doing that as the very last item. Um, okay. Um, the next item is approval of the agenda and consider any modifications. Any modifications from anyone?
I'll second.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All right, the motion's carried. Um, we'll go to the next item, which says the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. Um, as far as I know, we don't have any executive session scheduled. The only thing, like I said, will be the detention center tour at the end, but other than that, we don't have one, but we always reserve the right to go into executive session if needed. All right, the next is the consent agenda. All of these items are intended for, um, approval with one action unless any of the, um, commissioners ask for an item to be considered separately. Um, and so I would ask this evening if there's anything that needs to be considered separate.
Kelly?
Yes?
I provided my keynote reports for the consent agenda, agenda, they aren't listed. Did they get included?
I don't have them that I remember.
Okay, they can come up to the next.
Okay. When did you send them?
Oh, I thought I handed them Tuesday or Wednesday.
I would have been up here, so I might not have them yet.
All right. Anything else from the consent? All right, entertain a motion.
So move.
All right, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none will vote.
You have five yeses.
All right. So the consent agenda is approved and motion's carried. Um, we'll go on to the next item, which is Board of Equalization.
I'll make a motion to go into the Board of Equalization.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to go into the Board of Equalization. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, so the motion's carried. So we are in the Board of Equalization. The first item is discuss and consider approval of one motor vehicle exemption for Northfield Assembly of God Church hearing.
Heather going to talk on that?
Northfield Assembly of God Church.
Yeah, Heather's not here, so Kelly's dealing with it.
It's new for church functions and the tax loss is $1,140 and Heather recommends approval.
Okay, so this one's a new vehicle apparently.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is a 2025 GMC Sierra.
Well, what's a pickup used for in a church?
Just church function. I don't have anything more.
It meets, it meets her criteria, okay? Whether it's a pickup or a van again, doesn't really matter.
Yeah, may pull a trailer.
They might have a trailer.
What church is it? Church of God?
Northfield Assembly of God Church. Hearing?
Why move to approve the vehicle exemption for Northfield Assembly? All right, is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle exemption for Northfield Assembly. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Uh, we'll go on to the next item, which is review the late homestead applications.
Good evening, gentlemen. In your packets, you should have received, uh, ten letters from taxpayers requesting approval for a homestead that's filed late. Um, just, just as a reference point, homestead applications can be filed between February 2nd and June 30th each year, and during that timeframe, I am authorized to either approve or deny those for the state. And if a taxpayer comes in between June 30th and July 20th, uh, those can be approved, but I have to bring them to the board for board approval. So you have, the only requirements are that the taxpayer write a letter to the board explaining why they were late. You have those, each one of the ten, and I also put that on the cover letter, uh, the spreadsheet that I put together. Uh, most of them, I think eight of them were unaware of the deadline. Um, one forgot the deadline and the last one, there was a delay in getting their letter from the VA. So I think all of these are acceptable and I recommend approval on all of them.
Robert, is that a, is that a state statute that they have to come before the commissioners?
If they come in between, uh, after June 30th, but before the 20th of July.
It'd be so much easier if you had the authority to do that and just do it.
It would, it would.
Okay.
So they meet the criteria, uh, so from my perspective, I think they should be approved. The total value of those ten properties is 1,284,533. Um, depending on what the state approves, it could be up to a hundred percent of that that the state would ream- reimburse.
But they will make up the difference, so there's no shortcut.
Yeah, so they, they, the state will determine if they get, it's in 10% increments from zero to a hundred. So I think, you know, for this purpose, we should assume these are going to be a hundred percent until told otherwise by the state.
Okay.
Very good. I was, I was a little bit.
I'll second that.
Do we have to be one at a time or do we do them all at once?
We were going to talk about this a little bit.
Yeah, so say it again, Robert. Uh, you talked to me earlier about the potential of doing it in one.
Yeah, from, from my perspective, you know, I put together the spreadsheet. You have the letters. I've indicated the reason that they were late. Uh, I've also indicated the amount of the value that would be eligible for homestead, um, as well as a signature line for myself, because I will approve these for the board as a recommendation, and then a, um, approval line for the, uh, one of the county commissioners to sign. So from my perspective, as long as I get a blanket approval for these ten, it's a done deal.
And Jason, there's been some discussion with you on this item as well.
Yes.
And you're okay with that?
I am.
Okay. And Kelly, you said you're set up to do that.
All right.
So very good. So we have a motion, is that right? And then did we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay.
For all of them.
Mike second it? All right, and that's for all of them, yes. And, um, he's got this, um, form set up to be signed that way and so. Um, any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
In just a second.
Okay. We know when you're ready.
Hey.
All right, we'll vote.
And you have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I would make a motion to come out of Board of Equalization.
All right, motion in a second to come out of Board of Equalization. Any discussion?
Did he get that sheet to you to sign?
No. You want me to sign mine or?
Well.
You got a original? I'll be happy to sign that one.
I have an original copy.
Okay.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. All signed Kelly's.
I have that right here.
All right, I have that. Let me hand it right back to you. Thanks. There is one or two maybe. Okay, we'll go to the next item under general agenda items. Discuss and consider action on wildlife damage management agreement. The USDA Wildlife Services Program. Uh, Ryan Powers is here, the district supervisor of USDA Wildlife Services. Ryan, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the.
All right. All right. And you got some letter.
Yeah, um, right, my name's Ryan Powers. I guess, uh, provide, going to provide a few updates here, I guess, and then hopefully get some input from you on what direction, I guess, uh, Scotts Bluff County wants to go with the wildlife damage management. Uh, we've got a cooperative service agreement. We've had a cooperative service agreement, uh, here in Scotts Bluff County. Uh, I guess I don't know quite for how many years here, but, uh, we've had some changes most recently. Uh, the previous state director of the Nebraska program retired last year. Um, we had a wildlife specialist that was assigned to this, uh, these counties out here, Matt. I don't know if you guys remember Matt or not. He, he left and went to the Wyoming program. And so let's see here, fast forward, uh, after Matt left, Tim retired, um, the Kansas-Nebraska program recombined. You know, we are a federal agency, but we operate as, uh, kind of standalone state programs within this federal agency. The federal agency, we're here just to provide wildlife damage management assistance, uh, to cooperators, stakeholders, et cetera. Um, you know, the categories that we provide assistance to are agriculture, property, natural resources, and human health and safety are the four categories. So I came on board, uh, November of last year. Um, this is the first opportunity I've had to make, uh, the rounds around the state here to talk with the counties, uh, the boards that, uh, the counties that are participating, I guess, and so appreciate the opportunity to meet with you guys. So I guess, you know, I, I need some input from you on, on what direction, uh, you guys, you know, think that, uh, Scotts Bluff County may want to go. Um, back in January, um, we did put out a vacancy announcement. Uh, we had somebody hired, I guess it should, I should say, back in, in January, but when the new administration took over, you, you guys are probably all aware, you, you keep track of the news. Uh, there was a lot of changes within the federal government and it was no exception to us. It, it affected us and we were placed under a hiring freeze. Uh, technically, we're still under a hiring freeze, um, but I guess with our program in particular, uh, you know, we fall under Animal Plant Health Inspection Service within U.S. Department of Agriculture, and we've been given some leeway, I guess, some latitude, uh, with some of these programs that we deal with. Um, I think that in general, uh, this administration recognizes, um, the significance of a wildlife damage management program and, and what it means to ag producers, livestock producers. Uh, there's just a lot of, we have a broad diversity of stakeholders that we, uh, provide assistance to. Uh, you know, it can go anywhere from the Department of Defense to an individual livestock producer to a, a county, a state. I mean, that, that it's very broad diverse group of stakeholders. Um, it's a little bit unique in Nebraska, and I want to leave a copy of, there is, uh, animal damage control statutes that I would like for you guys to, to review when you get an opportunity. Uh, Nebraska's set up a little bit differently in the fact that, uh, typically with the, with the USDA Wildlife Services Program and all the other states that we, uh, provide service in, um, you know, we, we receive federal funding through Congress. Typically, we receive state funding through the state government. And then the third thing is individual cooperative service agreements with various individuals or counties or road departments. Uh, it could be a corn milling facility, very broad background. In Nebraska, it's rather unique though, that the state of Nebraska is not providing funding for a wildlife damage management program, uh, and they're, they're placing that burden upon the counties, uh, to choose whether they want to participate in a wildlife damage management program to provide, you know, assistance to residents of their particular county. So that's where we are here in Scotts Bluff County with this particular, uh, situation here. So that puts a little bit of a challenge, you know, not only for counties, I guess, because of, you know, trying to fund, uh, a wildlife damage management program, but it places, uh, challenges on us as well, because, you know, one year a county's in, the next year a county's out, next year they're in, next year they're out, and it does nothing for this long-term stability of a wildlife damage management program, you know, for those counties and for the residents in those counties. And so I guess, uh, it typically works the best, uh, in a particular region if you get a group of counties that if they, if the group of counties choose to participate, if they band together, um, you know, we've got counties in the state that are doing the same thing right now, but at one point in time, you know, this is prior to my time, but at one point in time out here, we had Scotts Bluff, Kimball, Moro, Cheyenne, and Banner. We had all five counties participating. Currently, uh, we have Scotts Bluff, Kimball, and Moro, uh, those three counties, uh, participating in the program. Um, with just those three counties, it's going to present some challenges, uh, if you choose to move forward with, with participating with this cooperative program, because currently the way the funding was set up, uh, each county was only providing approximately 10%, uh, funding 10% of a position. And so you can see that's going to present some challenges where if we, if we're only funding 30% of a position, uh, if we try to hire somebody, uh, most people aren't going to want to come to accept a job with the federal government under an intermittent basis and, and only work a few hours a week, you know, if requested. And so I guess my recommendation is, um, you know, have some discussion and determine if these counties out here want to keep participating, um, the counties would, would probably want to band together to fund that position together would be my recommendation. So, um, you know, currently right now, I think Scotts Bluff County was funding approximately 200 hours. One, one year is 200, 2,087 hours. There's 2,087 hours in a year. So 200 hours obviously is about 10% of a position. So previously, when we had the vacancy announcement, we did have an individual that was interested, didn't know if he was going to be interested long-term, uh, but I guess historically, that's the challenge that we're going to see is being able to, you know, number one, find qualified applicants, number one, and then once you find qualified applicants, you know, keeping them employed, uh, for, in, in a full-time position is typically what they're looking for. So I guess with that information, do you have any questions in particular?
Yes, Ryan. It was, it's, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it's always been our understanding that we assist in the funding of an individual here, not pay for the full, not pay for the full salary.
Yeah.
Now, listening to what you're saying here, it sounds like, like, we're only paying 30% of a salary and the, and the federal government's not paying anything else.
Yeah, we, we pay, yeah, Scotts Bluff County is paying 10%.
Well, between the three of us, 30%, 30% of a salary.
Yep, and so we're given, you know, like, I'll back up just a minute. So typically, within the, within the Wildlife Services Program, on average, I'll use North Dakota as an example, because North, that's where I was at previously for the last 21 years, but, uh, Nor- the, the federal government provided 50% of the funding, the state government provided 40% of the funding, and then cooperators provided 10% of the funding. And so in Nebraska, you know, we have a small portion of funding is currently coming from the federal government, but they don't see the matching contributions from the state. And so they're leaving it up to the counties to fund this program. And that's where the challenge lies, is that there's no state funding. And so there's been discussion, I guess, and the reason I handed out that animal damage control statutes is other counties have brought this up and discussion has ensued regarding, we, you know, we can't stay on this trajectory as an agency with this amount of funding, and the counties probably can't stay on this trajectory with, with this type of funding mechanism. It's, it's a mechanism that isn't going to sustain itself, this county funding model. I think ultimately what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to determine is state funding available or not. And with the animal damage control statutes that were passed a number of years ago, the framework is in place, and at one point in time, the state was providing, uh, funding for this program. The mechanism is still there. It talks about, you know, the USDA, this agency cooperating with the Nebraska Department of Agriculture and other entities, for instance, like in Nor- in North Dakota, we cooperated with North Dakota Department of Ag, North Dakota Game and Fish, and North Dakota Department of Water Resources, were the three state agencies that contributed funding. I don't see why we couldn't be doing that here, because I, like I'm seeing, like I'm learning, counties can't fund this by themselves. So I think that's where we're at. You know, over the next year, we're going to have to determine, uh, is there support for state funding or not to keep this going forward.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I, on one of the meetings with, with Matt, I believe.
Okay.
He reminded us, because we weren't sure whether we wanted to continue.
Yep.
And if a landlord eliminates whatever issue that they happen to have, they can send us a bill and we're responsible for the total amount if we're not participating, is that still?
Well, it, it talks about this in this, in these animal damage.
I haven't had a chance to read it here.
You can read through the fine print, but, uh, it talks about, you know, counties, uh, you know, the state entering into an agreement. It talks about counties entering into an agreement, and then it talks about, uh, like a, a livestock tax, you know, based upon the X number of livestock per county. Um, some states choose to go down that path, some states don't choose to go down that path of livestock tax. I mean, some, some states are supportive of it, uh, and they have predator control boards in those states that, uh, they collect the funds and then they roll it back into the program. Um, I don't know the last time that Nebraska ever had that, to be honest with you, if they ever did.
Is so, is this a decision made by the state and the federal government combined or one or the other or?
Well, you know, the, the federal government, um, they set us, the Congress appropriates money to the Wildlife Services Program, and then the agency has the ability to delineate where that money's going. The state government, uh, it's going to have to go through the state legislature, and that's the discussion that has started to unravel at this point in time is, you know, if we have stakeholder support, uh, cooperator support, stakeholder support, that if they want this program to continue in this state, then we're going to have to find a way to fund the program. That's just all there is to it.
I have an idea.
Yep.
Just let the state fund it.
Yep.
Like, like we do every other agency that's out there.
Yep, yep.
Rather, rather put it back on the back of the counties who are strapped for cash anyway.
I've heard that same comment over and over again, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I think that's the crossroads we're at.
Well, the thing is, you know, we, we give them, I think, we, what was our, our contribution was 12,000 a year, was that right?
Yeah, somewhere right around there, yeah, for last year.
We give them 12,000 a year and, and we ask Matt, so if we have some properties that need to be eradicated, they wouldn't do anything. That would be an additional charge if they did anything for us. If they did anything for any taxpayer, it would be an additional charge. That 12,000 just went to fund whatever you guys were paying your bills with. Anything additional for us or for any other taxpayer would be an additional charge to bring them out.
That's not necessarily correct.
That's the way you explained it to us.
No, that's not necessarily correct. That, that's the way it is with prairie dogs in particular. So with prairie dog damage management, um, you know, that, the, the funding that the county's providing, um, it covers, you know, a portion of that position. Um, if we go out to do, uh, prairie dog breeding using a, a registered toxicant, um, the landowner would pay for the pre-bait and the toxicant, the treated bait. That's the portion we pass on to, to the landlord, but the counties themselves, the money we receive from the counties, if you guys wanted to create a priority list on what we utilize that money for, we can certainly, um, incorporate that into the agreement. That's what we.
That's the way I understood it.
Yep.
That night, because Ken asked him, well, what if we, you ask him, what if we have some prairie dogs on one of our properties? He said, we'll be an additional charter.
Yeah, and I didn't, I, what, what I got out of it is what I'd said earlier, that if, if we weren't participating in the program, that the landlord would do whatever eradication necessary in the.
They would hire contract. We don't participate, then they hire a contract.
But the county pays for it.
No, 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 they pay their, they pay it theirself.
I, I don't know. I think, maybe, maybe I misunderstood it, but I thought that's what it was.
If we're not in the program.
Which, and I, and I'll carry that further, which is why we decided to go with that, rather than keep getting bills from landlords who are doing their own stuff. Because there, there was a time where we were thinking, we weren't going to do this. And, and without it, we were going to get all the bills from whoever wanted to do whatever work they love to do.
I don't think we ever gotten a bill from anybody's. We were not, that 12,000, uh, year and a half ago, never even got paid to you guys. You guys never collected that money. We haven't had one bill in a year and a half. That, uh, because when, when Matt quit or resigned and moved on, they, he quit just about like the first of the year, so they never billed us for the next year. We haven't been billed for going on a second year now, or that. Am I correct?
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but the way we, the way these agreements are set up, it's a cost reimbursable agreement, a cooperative service agreement. And so, you know, as part of that cooperative service agreement, there's a work fin- work plan and financial plan that's attached to it every year, and it delineates, you know, the, the plan, the objective, the, the goals, and then the financial plan portion, we revert, we, we get reimbursed for the work we conducted the previous quarter. And so you're, you could be right, that if we haven't.
I talked to Tom and he told me.
Yep.
Before you came, you've been here a year now?
No, no, November of '24.
Okay, so it was last year, so.
Yep.
They, we hadn't got billed prior to November, because that was right. Year, last year, or we haven't, I, I don't know that we've been billed this year.
Yes.
Oh, I, I, I know Tom said they weren't going to bill us until they had somebody in place to do the.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there, if, if you did get billed, we do have one guy that's, he's based out of, uh, Sydney is his address. He covers some of these counties down here, and there's been some landowners on the border of like Moro, for instance. I, I don't think Scotts Bluff was one of them, but we had him covering some complaints that were just across the border, like in Moro County. Uh, we have had some requests from Cheyenne or from, uh, Scotts Bluff County since I've gotten here. But it's been lack of personnel, that, uh, you know, we, we can't, sometimes we just can't get there with, with no, no personnel to get there.
As I remember it, one of the things that Matt. As I remember it, one of the things that Matt did say, and I don't know whether it was the last time he was here or whatever, but we put in that ten percent, and, and the numbers that he was showing indicated that they did more than ten percent of the, of what we were paying for, for whatever reason. Well, and, and, and again, I don't. The ten percent we're paying should be paying for twenty percent of it, because we only got five counties involved, there had to be some other funding coming in, whether the landlord paid it or, or it was an additional pay for us, but we were basically entitled to twenty percent of the time it took, because I think all five counties, it was five counties divided by, so you'd have twenty percent times five would be a hundred percent, but we're only paying actually ten percent for the twenty percent of time that we're paying.
Yeah, yeah, moving forward, I guess what I'm trying to say, I, maybe just put what, what, what happened in the past, put that in the past, moving forward, we're going to have to come up with a plan moving forward if you choose to participate, because we, you know, you guys can't continue to operate the way you guys are probably operating, and we certainly can't continue to operate the way we are operating, so.
So, the way I remembered was that.
Your version number three.
Yeah. I, what I remember was, was that, um, yeah, that we had talked about possibly not continuing with the funding, and then as it was explained to us, that if we didn't, um, go along with this plan, that we could be held responsible for all of it, basically.
That's the way I got it.
And that, um, it become what I thought was a no-brainer, that we needed to be a participant in the program. And, um, the, uh, that's the way I remember it, and, um, this, this says that our amount was eleven thousand six hundred and fifteen, is what this previous agreement shows, and, um, at that time, we said, well, we certainly can't, um, can't afford to do something for that amount of money ourselves, and one or two, um, requests from people would eat that much money up quickly, and this was in June of twenty-four that this was signed.
That's, that's the way I remember it also.
A little over a year ago.
Never, last I knew, Tom said it never got billed out from the previous January before this year.
Well, it may not got billed out, but.
Seems that he hadn't paid, they, we hadn't paid for it last year, and I know nothing's happened, it couldn't happen.
These agreements, uh, would have been put in place June first of twenty-twenty-four is when the current one would have been put in place, and it would go through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. And so here we are, you know, a year later, these, these county agreements are set up on that, that type of fiscal years, which would technically, you know, would start June first of twenty-twenty-five through June third of twenty-twenty-six.
So, so what do we need to do to keep this program going in Scotts Bluff County?
I guess that's a discussion for you guys, uh, you know, like, like I mentioned in the beginning, uh, when you have one county in, one county out, one county in, one county out, it's going to make it challenging for you, just as it is for us, and at one point in time, we had five counties, currently we're down to three counties, and so if, if only three counties are participating, then that would be thirty-three percent of a position. If five counties are participating, now we're back to twenty percent of a position.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, you're just here trying to get a commitment from us, you're not giving us a bill, you don't even have anybody to do the work at this point.
No.
If you can get the commitments, then you'll hire someone, you'll place them.
Yep.
Right now, basically, he's asking for a commitment.
Yeah, I can't put the cart ahead of the horse here because of these constraints that we've been placed under, i- if these counties, you know, Scotts Bluff, Kimball, Moro, you know, whatever it looks like, if you guys all choose, uh, as a group to go together, then we'll ask for permission to hire somebody, uh, but until we get that, uh, there, there's no sense in me going to get approval to hire somebody if, if we have.
It's going to become a budget issue too.
Well, it doesn't make any sense to me that, again, to me, I thought that, based upon the responsibility and the liability that it was taking away from us, or at least I thought it was, by signing this agreement and being part of this agreement, again, I, it, it seemed to be kind of a no-brainer, and I would think that we're willing to participate at least this much, maybe a little more. Um, it sounds to me like we need to get our state senator involved here a little bit in any meeting we have in the future, and I don't remember us being the driving force of putting an agreement together, I believe it was Matt.
Matt had the agreements pre-made and brought them to us.
Matt was the one that was selling the thought and the idea and asking us to be a participant. And, um, so, um, but now, what you're saying is the state's taking their funding away, and, um.
They haven't provided funding since probably the mid to late eighties.
They haven't, yeah.
So, it's all been our money anyway, along with the federal government, the way I see it.
Yep.
And so would you say that, um, now even, and even previous, that the federal government was providing fifty percent and we were providing fifty percent, would that be a good analogy? Or what, what was it, in this agreement, what was the intention of percentages?
Yeah, I don't know, that would have been before my time, to be honest with you.
You're, you're really close now, because I think they were looking for like a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and we were doing eleven times five.
Fifty-five.
I think, I forget who was funding the balance of that, somebody, they were picking up the balance on the other hand, or the fifty thousand.
Yeah, well, just with the, i- in general, with the changes that are going on within the federal government, I mean, moving forward, uh, you know, they're, they're going to want, you know, some matching funds is what it comes down to with this administration, and without matching funds, you know, these positions are going to go away, uh, so.
Well, we certainly have a, um, region-wide, um, association of counties.
NACO.
NACO, and our panhandle group, which I think is twelve counties, and we certainly, the next time we get together, this maybe needs to be on our agenda.
There's been several counties, yeah, that have brought this up.
State senators there, it'll be more than one, it'll be two or three probably, and then this whole idea needs to be presented to the counties in general and see if we can, and it, and when we say this stuff presented, we need to be in support of that, but to me, it would require you to present the program.
Yeah, yeah, this has come up, this exact topic has come up at other county commission meetings, and they proposed at the next NACO meeting in Kearney in, uh, December, uh, to have.
And that would be the whole state.
Yes, yep.
And that would be good too.
Yep, that's what they were requesting, so.
Now, in your contract, what, the contract that I read that Matt had put together, it didn't have anything to remove the liability if somebody would sue us for not, what he was, uh, saying that we were.
What he's referring to, it, it's in the Animal Damage Control statutes, and if you read through there, it does talk about private landowners being able to get reimbursed through counties, and if you read through their, the terminology on what it talks about, that's just one section, I mean, like I mentioned before, there's, it, it talks about the state cooperating in a program, counties cooperating, livestock associations, et cetera.
And I mean, in your contract, you don't provide us with anything that says you're going to protect us from any of the.
Nope.
Charges from, uh, landowners.
No.
So, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
We're not, it isn't, we're not buying any protection here.
It's just the way the state statute reads is what, what they were referring to, so.
Well, this may end, um, going back to Jason somewhat, to be looked at, to see what he sees our responsibility or liability to be, um, in Scotts Bluff County, but I was under the impression that that agreement, um, bought us, um, the expertise of your people, and that, um, ultimately that the landlord would pay, um, for their, um, things that needed to be done.
Certain changes to IRA.
Right. And we talked about, uh, but, the way I understood it, that those charges would not end up with the county, with this agreement, and that none of those charges would end up with the county, and so, again, it seemed like we had to do it, and it was a no-brainer again, and, so maybe we all need to look into it a little further.
Yep.
We can certainly have our, um, attorney, um, uh, review the statutes and make sure that we understand what our responsibilities are, and then, um, possibly look at this agreement that we've signed in the past, but I do believe, e, at the state level and/or our regional panhandle group of NACO members, that, um, that we should possibly have you there along with state senators, um, I guess, I say state senators with the thought that they were paying some up until recently, but you're saying it's been decades.
Yeah, mid to late eighties.
With the federal, federal was paying some, kind of about three years ago.
Federal government's been contributing to Nebraska, I, I mean, from the, from the very beginning, yeah.
And just that kind of drop off about two or three years.
Yep, yep, yep.
That's when this other thing kicked in at the.
Yep.
And it's, it's, it's just always been that they were there, and they would show up and give us a, give us a report on what they did and whatever it was, and if the contract needed to be renewed, we renewed the contract, assuming that everything was being taken care of, everything was being handled, and, uh.
And so I'm trying to figure out who's going to be the driving force behind this to make it happen. Worrying well.
Well, I, I certainly can come to the meeting to, to inform, is what I can come, but, you know, what I'm hearing at the other meetings is, is there is a lobbyist that's part of NACO, and that lobbyist is probably the one that needs to interact with the state government, state legislature, yep.
All right. So, I think that could happen, and, um, then the, uh, idea of several counties locally getting together.
Yep.
Still needs to be discussed, in my opinion, at the regional NACO meeting, and when is that next meeting, Kelly?
September.
September? I think that's the next time we get together.
But I think what Matt, or what Ryan's here right now for is to get a straw poll, whether we possibly would lean toward that direction, you know?
That's the main thing, let, let's say that Scotts Bluff, Kimball, and Moro, those three counties choose to, uh, one, they want to continue to participate, um, that would mean that Scotts Bluff County would be about thirty-three percent of a position, and I can run the numbers to let you know.
Correct me if I'm wrong, those that are not participating, we had five, we're down to three, those that have chosen not to participate, uh, if, if somebody goes out and does any work on their property, they can bill that back to the, to the, to the individual county, that's.
We would, we, some cooperators are choosing to partic, uh, choosing to pay for service themselves.
Okay, now, so having, having established that we had five.
Yep.
Are we able to add more counties to that?
Yeah, neighboring counties for sure, yep, the neighboring counties.
And, and, I mean, would it be the panhandle, or would it be the, how, how far out can you go?
Yeah, I, I would say if, if it was neighboring counties, it would be doable, um, you know, to try to, you know, like, for reference, I guess, you know, like, previously, we, we would probably cover four, five, six counties, depending upon the size of the counties, um, if we're talking about, you know, Cherry County, some of the bigger counties, it would be a much larger landmass, but if we're talking about, you know, Scotts.
Oh, we'd have Sioux County, Scotts Bluff County.
Dawes and Sioux, they're on their own, they, they, we've, I've got a meeting with them tomorrow, and so they've banded together, uh, Box Creek and Sheridan have banded together.
I see.
Uh, there's a lot of counties that have banded together, and that's how they continue to operate, but it's the counties that try to operate independently, that it just, it.
So, where there's only a couple of them, are they funding?
Yep.
They're funding the whole thing?
Yep.
Whatever salary it is for whoever the individual is.
Really, there would be a contractor, and you don't pay a contractor if he isn't doing it.
Well, I, I don't know.
It just depends on what level of service the counties want, that's part of the discussion for like Dawes and Sioux, uh, they tried to go out on their own last year, didn't work for them, now they're wanting to come back to us, and so, uh, it, it just comes down at the end of the day, uh, this request for service type basis, you know, how much does the county want to participate?
And I don't have any idea how those fees were split up, whether it's by acres or whatever, but obviously, with the five counties you were talking, uh, Scotts Bluff County, Banner County, Kimball County, Cheyenne County, they're all somewhat reasonable in size, it's Moro County that doubles in size.
Yep.
Probably, um, but certainly, I, uh, I don't know what these guys are thinking, but my personal feeling is, um, that based on an agreement of something the same or similar, um, I'm not going to have a problem with that, with, with what I think it does to help us, and Jason, maybe at some point you can review this and give us a little training session as to what we're responsible for, and then what this agreement does to help us, okay?
Perfect.
Any other comments about whether we're in favor or not in favor or whatever?
Do you want to do a straw poll on this?
Just a straw poll.
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm all for doing it, for, for the reason that I was, both Mark and I are doing it, that if, if we don't participate, we're going to start getting bills from, from landlords.
The only thing I, I would encourage us to do this, if there's some additional funding brought in, if we're going to have to do it with, you know, half the funding, because he's looking at having fifty percent of the funding at five counties, he's only going to have fifty percent of the funding, he's going to have to have the rest of the funding coming in from somewhere else, or he, or nothing's going to happen here. So, you know, I'm in favor as long as you can bring in enough funding to do it.
You know, and that, yeah, and that's.
And without raising ours, I mean.
We're not going to sign anything, we won't sign anything.
Right, we're, I think, so I think the story is we're, we're in agreement in principle.
Yep.
As long as the expense doesn't go sky high.
Yep, perfect, and if you want me to come back at a future meeting, certainly let me know.
Okay, Ryan.
Yep.
I am part of the Panhandle District Executive Board, and we're having a planning meeting for our September district meeting.
Okay.
On the twenty-four, like Thursday of this week, I have a planning meeting.
Okay.
Are you interested, I don't know where, I mean, like, I think the location is to be determined, typically Gearing or Bridgeport.
Yep.
To be there in September.
Yep.
Because I could add you to the agenda.
September twenty-four, is that what you're saying?
For, for the board to receive a presentation with all the commissioners together.
All commissioners, yeah. I think that'd be great.
Yeah, just let me know.
Okay.
Time and date and time.
Even if you guys put a booth together, you know, it might be a really good thing.
Absolutely, yep, that's come up the board two weeks ago.
At NACO in Kearney.
He's, well, he's talking in December, but I'm talking in September if he can be available for that meeting.
I meant to say in Kearney.
Booth's down there.
Well, they charge you for a booth.
Yeah, you got money on your face?
Unfortunately not.
Well, then you might want to hit NACO up for being a part of the agenda.
Yep.
A presenter, presenter for the.
Yep, okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, um, we'll plan on going here to the next item, the next item is to discuss and consider appointment of Scotts Bluff County Community Spirited Citizen to the Panhandle Public Health District Board of Health. Maybe that's my item that I need to talk about, I suspect. Um, so, um, several weeks ago, maybe months ago, I mentioned to you that our, um, appointed, uh, representative to the Panhandle Public Health District, we have one person from Scotts Bluff County that we appoint, and, um, that person was Mrs. Weeby, and she decided that, um, she did not want to serve any longer, and, um, wanted, uh, so then Jessica Davis, who's the executive director of Panhandle Public Health, um, said that we would need to appoint someone, um, to fill that position. Brought it to the board, um, at one point, and, um, we had had one person, Marie Parker, that was interested, but, uh, Ken told me that in the past, that we had advertised and let people know that there was a position open, and we would take letters of interest, I guess I'll call it, and, um, from the, um, public, and, uh, see who might be interested in that position. So, we did that, and, um, Kelly, um, has two, um, letters of interest, one from Mark Carth, and one from Marie Parker, which I was expecting based upon what I had heard, and so we have two people that are interested, and, um, the, I don't know whether, um, we're simply ready to make a decision on these or not, I will tell you this, I've known Marie for twenty-five, thirty years probably, um, she originally was on the board and represented Banner County because they lived in Banner County, she worked in Banner County, and she's represented Banner County's position for quite some time, and then recently, um, she had resigned off of the board, um, um. um, in the, from the Banner County posi- position and she lives on East Thirty-second Street in Scotts Bluff. And, but she again had been on the board for over ten years, that's what your letter says, that, um, she sent to us and she's been active, um, in many of the different functions that Panhandle Public Health does. Then we got a, uh, letter of interest from Mark Carf and, um, I did speak to Mr. Carf today. Is Mark here tonight? He said he might be able to come, but apparently not. In any event, he, um, wrote us, uh, a letter with some of the things that he's done throughout the community. Um, Mark, um, works at Platt Valley Bank, uh, here in Scotts Bluff in the ag lending area and, um, um, said that he's just simply trying to be involved with community minded things. And when he seen the letter of interest, um, that was published in the, in the paper, that, um, he sent his information in. But I, like I said, I did talk to him and, um, um, he would at least like to be considered as well. So, I don't know whether, um, this would allow us to try and make a decision this evening on this position. Um, I think that, um, we have the, the two letters, um, of interest and that's, that's as much as I know these folks. So if there's any questions, Kelly?
I just wanted to check the publication to make sure that it, we didn't just, we didn't know what day a decision would be made. I, I know what you had hoped would happen. Was that we'd get them so that they would be ready for the packet on Friday when I sent it out, the letters would be ready for you.
Right, last.
In hopes that you would be able to make decision today, but you, it's not something that you said would be done today.
And I don't think it has to be made tonight, but Panhandle Public Health does have a meeting this week.
Okay.
And, um, if we make the decision, I'll be able to present that to them.
Okay.
At our meeting, I think it's on Thursday.
No promises were made.
Did the Panhandle Health give a recommendation on any one of these?
Well, at the time, they only knew of Marie Parker and they were recommending that when I brought it to you before. Um, and only they know her, she's been on the board before, she's familiar.
She was on when I was on it.
Yeah, at least she's saying over ten years and, um, so, um, she certainly, um, has, she, she knows the process and she knows what they do and and some of those things. I think she's even went on some of their trips to even DC and maybe other areas.
I think at one time she was president.
She may have been.
I think so.
Well, I've known Marie for probably forty-plus years. She has a strong background in medical, she's a registered nurse. Uh, at one time she was a, a flight nurse on a medical helicopter out of Carney. Uh, she was, last I knew at one time she was a school nurse at Banner County. And so she does have an extensive experience in the medical field, which is primary responsibility of Panhandle Public Health is, is, uh, the health of the county.
I know the, the, the time that I spent on the board with her, she was very active, always like Mark said, uh, attending state national meetings and she was very, very, very active in the board and, uh, I think she's got all a ton of experience with this. And nothing against Mark Carf either, I think, I don't know the gentleman, but, uh.
I didn't know him either, um, he was, um, pleasant to talk to and had good information, um, he's, um, some of you might know Zach Carf from the bank and this is his son, I believe.
I, I know of him, I just don't know. I would, I would move that we would approve Marie Parker.
I'll second that. All right, so we have a motion and a second to, uh, appoint, um, Marie Parker to the position on Panhandle Public Health Board?
Do we, wait till the decision's.
Okay, is there any other discussion? I'm, I'm in favor of that as well, um, just knowing Marie's background and I've known her for at least twenty-five, thirty years, so. All right, any, any other discussion?
I, I don't know either one of them, I'd probably vote either way because I think a young fellow probably needs a chance to, but if she has the experience Ken's talking about, I, I said, I, I don't have a problem going either direction.
And if we have openings, uh, on any county positions, otherwise I think Mark might be interested in others as well, so. All right, well, hearing no more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, the motion's carried, so we'll all let Marie know and.
I was going to say, how do we?
I'll notify her and I'll let, um, Panhandle Public Health know.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you. Okay, the next item is, um, to discuss and consider approval of an SDL, Special Designated License, I think that stands for, liquor license for Nile Brera Valley Vineyards. Sheriff?
Afternoon, gentlemen. For the first one on your list, SDL for Nile Brera Valley Vineyards, they've been here before, there is no negative information on them. I'd recommend approval. For the second one, the SDL for the Flyover Brewing Company, the same thing, the, uh, management there, no, nothing negative. No problems with that. The third one, I have a, I have a comment on and Mr. Ray, you want to come out and introduce yourself?
Yes. Give me a side, you can give back a coffee. So, my name's Derek Ray, I own Paradigm, Paradoxum LLC. Ian Mitchell, we're applying for SDL for the Balloon Fest, we just applied for our catering license as well. Um, we're familiar with the processes, um, tips, trainings, uh, it's all going to be blocked off, we provided, uh, everything for the outline that's going to be going on there for the overview of, of, of the event itself. Um, I'll be out there on site, wristbands and checking IDs as well. If any questions I can answer.
So Paradigm is the, I'll call Coffee and you have a liquor license there as well, then I'm assuming.
Call us a coffee place, no.
Okay, it's not, it's a restaurant, would you call it? Okay. And it's right there across from the theater or library or whatever?
Um, right next to SNS Plumbing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Across from Red's.
Yes.
Okay, so further downtown, I was thinking right up against Highway Twenty-six, but it's not.
Okay, that's why you were thinking Coffee, I was thinking that too, so we're both in the wrong location.
So, the reason I invited him up here to talk is because if I've been here, I have a problem with the license application.
You do?
His name's not on it.
I asked the same question, I asked it of Jason.
And so, so, and I just talked to him about that and he wasn't sure about how, so he'll submit.
Yeah, I'll amend the SDL.
With his name on it, then I have no problem. He forwarded it with the Balloon Fest, it says organizer's name, you put the Balloon Fest organizer's name and I know that she's not running it, I have to know who's running it. So, his first time and so.
He's got enough time to get it.
I'll get a switch door, so Kelly.
Have it for the next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're time wise, we can do it at the next meeting and not have a problem.
Can't you pending the correction, just to prove it?
Make the motion with his recommendation.
Yeah.
Contingent on your approval.
Contingent on him submitting it with his name there, if the event organizer, I'd recommend approval.
And if, and if things don't fall, you can let us know, we can prove or something.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that we're going to be voting on these separately, please, Ms. Kelly?
Yes. Please.
Put your name on it, that's all I'll tell you.
All right.
Okay, I'd recommend approval of all of them.
Okay, with that contingent.
What's that?
Okay. So the first one, um, is the Nile Brera Valley Vineyards, which has been given a favorable approval from the sheriff. Um, I'd entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, SDL.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for Nile Brera Valley Vineyards SDL. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Go to the next one, which is the discuss and consider approval of SDL for Flyover Brewing.
I move that we approve, uh, the SDL for Flyover Brewing.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Um, motion's carried, we'll go on to the next item, which is discuss and consider approval of the SDL for Paradigm, Paradigm or Paradoxum?
Paradoxum LLC.
Yeah, Paradoxum, okay, all right, LLC. Um, so my motion would be to approve the SDL contingent upon, uh, the application being resubmitted and then, um, the approval of the sheriff.
I'll second that.
Okay?
Oh, oh, oh. I'm caught up.
Are you caught up?
I'm caught up.
All right, so we have the motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, so that motion's approved, so if you guys get that stuff done, get it to the sheriff, we'll be in good shape.
Get it to the sheriff.
Yes, to the sheriff.
You already checked him?
Yeah.
You, you have no problem if he has to.
Right, so the question was, does it need to go through you or directly to Kelly?
Send it directly to her.
Okay. You're good with it, all right.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. Okay, next item is discuss cooperative purchasing with Sourcewell. Lisa?
Okay, I was presenting at the end of last month to set up our stop loss insurance, that was at last meeting, June twenty-seventh, and we are, we are utilizing an agreement that we obtained through Alliant Insurance Services to contract with Sunlight this year. We're still utilize, we're still working with RCI, but our re, reinsurance carrier will be Sunlight that they brought to us, that Alliant did. And at that time you had asked that I put out an RFP because I'd been working with this broker, his name is Ian, to get us to that point. We had a lot of information, he's helped us an immense amount and I've learned so much in the last two months about this whole arrangement with RCI and how we can be better, so I think they can take us good places, so. My question to you today is I do have an RFP prepared and I would put it out starting tomorrow or talk to you about cooperative purchasing agreements and I didn't know how much any, we don't talk about that too much, so I thought I'd kind of put some information in front of you to maybe if you would allow me, we'd do the cooperative purchasing rather than do the RFP. Alliant Services has told me more than once they have a contract through this organization called Sourcewell. Sourcewell is a cooperative purchasing service that operates out of Minnesota. And first I wanted to start off with our, our statutes for the Purchasing Act are found in twenty-three, three, one, oh, one through three, one, one, five. And it's, we're at a point in time they're increasing our levels of when we have to go and seek out RFPs. And at this point we have, if we're going to be paying for an item that's going to be over seventy thousand dollars, then we need to be looking, giving up people opportunity to bid. With the exception of twenty-three, three, oh, nine, when competitive bidding is not required. Competitive bidding is not required when purchase is unique or non-competitive on petroleum products, professional services or equipment maintenance, which I think this is a professional service, but the, um, or when price has been established by one of the following, the Federal General Services Administration or through a cooperative purchase agreement by which supplies, equipment or services are procured in accordance with a contract established by another governmental entity or group of governmental entities, and I put the actual statute out here.
Does that cover any leasing at all?
Um, possi- possibility.
I think it should cover leasing.
Okay, I'll, we'll talk more about that, okay, but I just wanted to say right here, co- cooperative purchasing agreement is specifically listed in the statute, which that's what this organization is. Um, okay, my next. Um, the, the, the organization will go after a certain segment of whatever they're looking for. You know, Murphy Tractor or whoever can, can apply for these competitive opportunities through their RFP process. They're doing all this work on our behalf. Procurement is conducted on our behalf of one or more governmental entities for use, for use, for our use, they're doing this on our behalf. And buyers and seller, sellers can capture efficiency and savings by connecting through purchasing cooperatives, alleviating our need to do an RFP advertising, waiting a month. If this organization's already done all the background check, all, all the work that would be needed in an RFP, proven that they are a good viable option for local governments and any other governmental entity. This particular organization, Sourcewell, is, comes from Minnesota, I already mentioned that. Um, I brought this up at our recent regional governance meeting and I know City of, Scotts Bluff utilizes Sourcewell, so does City of Gearing, so does Scotts Bluff County Roads Department, they have, I mean, I think this came up, Steve said he's used Sourcewell products and contracts before to.
Now, are we going to be locked out, using it all, are we still able to go outside of that?
Oh, of course, this is just an option too.
I'm just trying to learn.
Mm-hmm, okay, but anyway, Sourcewell does, it develops the RFPs and what they ask for in an RFP might be more than what we ask and they complete the solicitation and manages a website of resources. Anyway, going into the, hopefully if my link is working, into their actual site. And I mentioned there's local governments, we can go into, anyway, I was, let me check this thing first. I'm not that, I, I've been gone, I've gone through the site and I don't, I'm not that savvy with getting through it all, but anyway, let's see what I can get. Said you have to go and get your account number, of which if you already have an account number, we don't have to take the time to do it. Hmm, which tells me these are the agencies that are already used, that already have accounts with this agency and they've used, utilized Sourcewell as well, City of Gearing, City of Terrytown, Gearing Schools, Gearing Irrigation in Scotts Bluff County and the Housing Authority.
So if we're already using it, what are, what are we trying to accomplish?
What I'm trying to accomplish is not having to do an R, RFP because the organization I'm already working with is recognized by Sourcewell.
Not do RFP for your employee?
For, for doing, for procuring insurance brokerage services, I'm already working with an agency that's already approved through this agency.
I see where you're at.
That's what I'm just saying, if we can talk about what it is to use Sourcewell, maybe I don't need to do an RFP as well. And that's if Sourcewell put out there what all they do do i- as part of their RFP process. There's just many steps to it and they go and award their vendors and you can blow them onto their contracts.
So are we approving just for this one time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it isn't going to lock us into any.
Oh heavens, no, it just. I'm saying if I could use that, then I can continue using the person I am, I have been using. And he gave me some information to help sell him. How they've helped different agencies in within our state, this is my Alliant broker. Alliant is approved contract of Sourcewell, they've already done RFPs and been approved by the. They've already done R F Ps and been approved by this agency that approves contracts throughout the United States. They work with the League of Municipalities and Naco in Nebraska. And in particular, he works with Sidney Hemingford Dumby County Schools. Uh, let's see, I'm like, I have a better way out.
Does he say like seventy counties or something? Just working with these?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
And, there is a charge for their services or not?
We don't get charged directly. It, it's going to go through R C I, and R C I will pay for them. And, and it's, it's kind of like a certain percentage, like R C I is already charging us three percent of some of their fees to place our stop-loss coverage. Well, they didn't place our stop-loss coverage, so our fees went down, but they would be paying an agent like this. I, I am working with him or I first met him because I want to establish a way to do our open enrollment in a better manner than handing out papers to every employee and having to get everybody turn their, to turn their papers in there. We can automate this process. This company can help me do it. That's where I first met him. And then he's telling me of different ways that we can look to reorganize our health plan, not just the way we've been doing it the last year, ten years, or ten, fifteen years, it's worked, but there, maybe we can join a bigger organization, not just Scotts Bluff County. Maybe we can join into National Naco and get to be a group of other public entities and spread our risk with everybody else. I think it's moving us in a different direction that would be moving us forward. I mean, that's kind of my goal right now, is trying to see what we can do to do better.
Thing that impressed me, were you at the meeting, Mark, the House, the House meeting? At a Zoom meeting with him?
Right.
I was impressed with the fact that he's there to protect us, to, to go out and to look for these different things and these other, these other methods of what we're doing, and he wouldn't allow us to get into something that wasn't going to be good for us. We've never really been told that before. It was, I was, I was really impressed with his presentation. I think the rest of the committee was, too, but I.
And he and his team, yeah, so I wrote down my, my perspective. Ian's team can produce resources to assist us with our, with our insurance, with re-establishing our insurance, or maybe we're in a good place, but we're going to explore that and see if there isn't a better way we need to be handling it. Do we continue with self-funded? Do we look at, I guess there's a process called level funding, where we can at least, instead of not knowing what the claims are, we can pay the same amount each month. That's level funding, so we can work with our money better. I have provided Ian his, his associate, his association, the information used to procure the current stop-loss coverage, and I have confidence in the resources and knowledge he has or has opportunity to garner that'll allow us to revamp our insurance package to something that will meet our needs now and in the future. That was my goal. I would like to continue working with this person. You asked me to go out for an R F P, I'm prepared to do that, but I have all the sources that say he's, that this company's already gone through the, what's required in order to be recognized as a provider of service that is reputable.
This is going to whip you along faster than you.
Oh, yeah.
This is what we're needing.
This is what I'm needing at this point.
And we need to, or committed through the end of the year.
With the stop-loss, we have, with the re-insurance carrier we have right now, we will have to re-sign up for something at the beginning of the year, which.
The, I guess, for me, the only thing, I guess, I'm, and we talked about going out for requests or proposals, my hope or intent would be that, um, that it would provide a process for competition. Now, I'm not so sure that this doesn't do that anyway, that he's possibly doing that for us.
Right.
Without having to go through the more formal request for proposals, but he's doing it informally, I think, searching for better prices and things, um, through a, simply a buying process that possibly he uses. And then, what you're saying is, is this company is approved, that if he makes a recommendation to us, that it satisfies the state R F P requirements.
We've already, they've already done that process and are recognized as a provider of service for insurance procurement.
That's looking out for us, basically.
Well, it's worked for other entities, I mean, close by, other governmental entities.
Okay.
So, I can.
So, I'm trusting that he's doing what.
He and his organization.
Right.
Because when I ask him, give me information about you, and he says, no, it's not just me, it's Alliant.
All right.
It's him and a group of people that work together to provide the service.
Really, what he's doing is the R F Ps, gathering that information and presenting one to us, not ten.
Yes.
That's the way I'm seeing it.
Representing the best one to us.
Would you say that's what he does?
I don't know that he's, he's not looking at other agencies. Is that what I'm interpreting you to say?
Yeah.
He's representing his own.
Other providers.
Well, okay, not, not other insurance brokers, but he's talking, he can provide us information with Linus with Cigna, to with Blue Cross, with United Healthcare, or with other T P As, if that's what we choose to do.
I'm talking about direct providers, not brokers.
Okay, direct providers, like other insurance companies. Absolutely, that's what it's all about.
He would be doing that.
The, the other thing that I got from him is, he's, he's looking at our, our whole program, our whole self-insure program, and watching to make sure that everything is going the way it needs to go.
Right.
For one reason or another. He's just, they've been in business a hundred years.
Correct.
And so they've got some experience, you know.
Absolutely.
As I say, we were, we were impressed with his presentation, whether the insurance committee was.
And I'm learning more and more of the information maybe I didn't have that we should have been have, received or utilizing, make decisions in the past. Doesn't mean anything.
Know better, we do better.
We learn better how we utilize it.
That's the part that impressed me, is that, and, and we've all been with R C I, I mean, and, and we've been happy with R C I, that was, they were here, they were local, they were doing what they were asked to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this organization does what they're asked to do, plus a whole lot more, and, and, and looking at things, and we've never, we've never really had that, that service, and it's.
Well, it's way broader. Like I said, he works with the League of Ne- Nebraska Municipalities, and we serve nearly seventy counties throughout our, to work with Naco, fulfilling the same comprehensive consulting role in procurement, enrollment, service, and communication materials to over eighty cities in town. But he also does that for the counties. And they work with the schools, I think, one of his bigger clients is Douglas County.
So, I was at the same regional governance meeting that you were at, and I thought that the city manager, Scotts Bluff City Manager, hearing all were, and others that said they had used them before, didn't have anything negative to say about them at all.
Yeah, I was hoping Steve would be here, and he could tell us how he's utilized it, but he was not able to be here tonight, so. That's my ask of you. This, this falls under a cooperative service agreement, which is something we, or per the statute, we could, they've already done the requirements under Sourcewell, they being Alliant, and that is the agency I am looking for. I happen to be working with a broker named Ian Shada and his coworker Tammy Starkey. They are across the United States, they aren't just in Nebraska, but they do serve many agencies in Nebraska. I ask that you consider letting me proceed just with Alliant, but if there's a uncomfort in that, we can go ahead and do the R F P.
Can we ask Jason, are you familiar with any of this, Jason?
You know, without looking at a specific contract, I guess the issue would be is whether or not the contract meets the cooperative purchasing agreement in 2330.
Or you're just concerned about the items in the contract?
They have within Sourcewell, the contract that they bid out to Sourcewell.
Have you reviewed it, Apple Travel, please, and be sure you got everything in there?
I just know what I've been working with, and I.
I think it should be reviewed.
What do, what am I going to?
I mean, so you know that you're getting apples wrapped, and we're going to miss a step here.
Well, we're, we don't have anybody hired doing this now. This is something brand new, so they're, this isn't apples to apples, anything we're doing.
We're changing our R F P, we're taking this, these people's quote, right?
Yeah, through Sourcewell.
We're accepting a quote.
Basically, letting them do the R F P for us, the way I'm understanding it.
Well, they've already done it, it's been accepted. This is the contract through Sourcewell, they aren't doing an R F P, they already have.
The information.
The information's there, it's been approved through their process, they have a very diligent process, this agency called Sourcewell, which is run by, is a governmental unit in Minnesota. Sourcewell is a local government and services cooperative created under the laws of the state of Minnesota, offering a cooperative purchasing program to eligible participating government entities. My, my feel is, we could do our own R F P, I don't think we're getting any further. It's, this is a whole new region.
I'm trying to get out of any of these, I'm sure. We don't, so we don't meet here again next year at this time and say, well, they didn't do this, and they didn't do that.
Or we can stay where we are and go further in, or we can stay where we're at and continue, I mean, we're struggling.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, well, anyway, it's just a couple of things that come up, and I, R C I was doing, it was doing very well for us until we, we've hit some very high-dollar claims. It's, maybe it's not the.
Again, one of the things that impressed me, he explained to us some things that should be happening or not happening, that he has experience with, and it wasn't, he wasn't picking on anybody, here's, you know, here's your situation, you should be doing this, or we could do this better, or do this better, and that's what we didn't have before.
Well, I'm saying, I'm just, you know, we're, we're going, playing a whole new ballgame here, I mean, when we just sidestep an R F P, and we use these people's opinion, we have to be darn sure that everything's included, we're betting, you know, all our employees that they're going to get treated correctly.
And we have the same concern, I do, I do, I just want to be sure that everyone is going to be treated correctly.
The insurance committee, when you met on this, was generally in favor of this?
With, with, working with Alliant, yes. It was the commissioners who said, consider an R F P, which is where I'm at now. And I'm like, well, is an R F P necessary? I think I got the guy, but.
Well, and when I said an R F P, one of my concerns was, did we internally have the expertise to put a full and complete R F P proposal together? Because I don't know that, um, we're not going to have the expertise these people have, what I'm understanding. Would you agree with that?
No. Because I did get an R F P together, was very comprehensive.
Then chances are, it's going to go back to the same thing we're talking about, unless there's somebody else out there that we don't know about for whatever reason. These, you know, these, these folks impressed us, the committee, Lisa, Lisa's been working with them, they've got the experience, that they're, they're not high-pressure individuals.
My understanding is, they would still look at our C I and compare it to whatever else was presented.
If there's other third-party administrators that, or we may be, like, again, we may be self-funded, we may not, but we do, the R F P will be October before we start looking at that, but.
My change in this, it doesn't go without cost, this company's going to have to charge essentially.
But not to us directly. It goes through the, it goes through the insurance companies, or like the T P A, they, they manage that by the level of funding, or level of work that the T P A does, which T P A is R C I. We do not pay them directly.
So, the next, the next on the item is approving what we're just talking about, is that what I'm seeing here?
Yeah.
Let's wait till Charlie comes back out here, get everybody on board, walk through the board.
Well, the first, um, item of business was discussion. And the second one would be to discuss and consider the R F P, which I think we've done, but consider or potentially vote on this item tonight.
On the ground support tailored service, Alliant combines national strength with Nebraska-based service. Our Omaha team works side by side with public employers throughout the state, attending board meetings, engaging with administrators, and driving year-round value. We specialize in collective bargaining environments, self-funded, fully insured, fully insured and hybrid strategies, A C A compliance and nondiscrimination testing, transparent employee communications and engagement. This will be huge from some of the things we have seen, or some of the, some of the demonstrations we've seen. Long-term cost containment without compromising care. Why many public entities bypass the R F P process for Alliant? While R F Ps are a common procurement tool, many Nebraska public entities have chosen to engage Alliant through direct appointment. Our track record, reputation, and deep sector expertise allow boards to confidently select us without the delays and limitations of a formal R F P. Clients appreciate our ability to deliver immediate value, strategic insight, and compliance-ready support without a lengthy procurement timeline. Public entities utilizing Sourcewell can appoint Alliant by going through their Sourcewell contract and bypass an R F P while staying in compliance with procurement regulations. As Alliant is the Sourcewell solution for employee benefit services. That was some of the reasons that they say they're the right choice.
Well, they're describing this also inside their front pages of, like, cooperative purchasing.
Mm-hmm.
And there says, they're helping, um, develop requests for proposals, that's what we're talking about, for competitively solicited contracts for qualified suppliers, and so that's what they're doing there. They're, um, helping do that for us, in my opinion.
Exactly.
And, um, using their expertise in those areas.
This is some of the contracts they have out there.
So, if they, um, bring something to us, and they're going to present one company, one proposal to us at the end and say, we've done the research, we've done the R F Ps, we've done all of those things, and here's what we're recommending to you.
Here's what we're recommending to the insurance committee, and we say yes or no. And then bring that to the commissioners.
Right. And we still have at that point, the, um, opportunity to vote on it at that time. That's certainly what it is, is a cooperative purchasing in it. Um, I, one of the things that, um, I believe has been really successful for us, and glad that we're a member of, and that's N A R M A. I think in the overall scheme of things, it has worked well for us.
N A R M A or Naco?
N A R M A. And Naco, too, but N A R M A especially. We don't get any, do we do any insurance services through Naco? Of any kind?
Life insurance.
Okay.
For employees, long-term disability and vision.
Okay, but they're, same story.
They might be tied through.
They're doing, um. They're doing, um, they're searching out the best possible policies and pricing.
I'm gonna make that assumption because I've never second-guessed that. I mean, I guess we used to have Vision through a different organization, but we just went back to Naco Vision, which was actually VSP. Anyway, either way, but we just had better pricing by going through Naco.
But both of those groups, being Naco or Nirma, have, I believe, is the county's best interest at heart.
Right.
And, um, I'm thinking and assuming, and I think I'm understanding that this process would do the same. And not have to hire, so to speak, someone else to do it, to help us do it, so I'm.
The RFP process, Mark?
At this point in time, I'm, what's that?
At the RFP process?
Right. Because, um, and, yeah. So I'm, um, at this point in time, and based upon the insurance, it is, I personally am okay with it. And part of the reason why I am is because certainly this particular subject is not one that I feel overly qualified in, and I, I like the idea of giving it to a professional that can do the negotiating for us. In that regard, I'm, I'm willing to, to try them.
I'm feeling the same way. I never had to deal, we didn't, you know, things were taken care of through RCI, but sometimes you have to go outside your box and understand, maybe there's different options.
I know, when I read through this, I thought to myself, that would save Lisa a whole lot of time. Ask for something.
Trying to check that out would be ridiculous. Well, unless you know what you're expecting out, that's, that's probably the issue. I would, are, are we on to discuss and consider, or the, we're still back on discuss?
They're kinda together.
I thought we'd moved on to discuss and consider the RFP or using Sourcewell.
Charlie, we were hoping that you would be back here before we voted on this, and if you have any input on it.
You see, I see, I've come across, uh, votes from Sourcewell, Sourcewell at various Naco events, talked to quite a lot.
We'll be there.
I would, I would move for approval of that. Discuss and consider a report of consulting group services.
I'll second that. All right, so we have a motion in these, in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yesses, one no, nay being rising.
Okay. So motion's carried. And, um, so you know where you're at, Lisa?
Yes, thank you. Thank you personally.
All right. So the next item is to move on to old business, uh, time clock plus and payroll processes. Let's see, Lisa, are you gonna give us any update?
Yeah, I can give you an update. Char- Charlotte has been working, working a lot on this process, and she's getting things to import to MIPS. She's working more with MIPS now. Like everything, there's bugs left and right that we're having to fix, but she's working through. We kinda took over some roads payroll information this week, you know, out of the kindness of her heart, and now, Charlotte, now, we'll get it done tomorrow. This is, it, it was good for us to see where they are at in the process, so we can get things cleaned up there, so they'll be ready to move. A lot of little rules of the county, that, I mean, different departments do, think, do business different, so you have to adapt to everybody, and that's gonna be, um, what do I wanna say, challenging. Anyways, we're moving forward. It was, it's a good report for you today.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if you don't mind, I have something going at six, I think I'm leaving.
Okay.
Your way.
Do you wanna talk on anything else?
I don't think so. I'm working, I've got some budget meetings, I'll get hold of you guys if you wanna join me this week. I'm out.
I'll be here tomorrow, see you.
There you go.
I'm gonna get to see you in my own case.
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
Have a good night.
What's that?
I told her, have a good night.
Oh, yeah. All right, next item is public comments. I don't know if we, okay, so Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting, or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The Board will not take action on comments presented this date. Do we have anyone here this evening, from the public?
You wore them out.
Looks like it, I'm not seeing anyone. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed. The next is, uh, Board and Staff Reports. So I think Kelly will start over here and go this way this time?
Just, do you want me to update our, our protest or anything? We've got a full day tomorrow.
Okay.
Not a lot of protesters, but a few with several parcels.
They've cut down from sixty to forty.
We have a full day tomorrow. No matter what, I mean, it's all up to you guys, we've allotted time for them, but even if we get stuff opened up, you let them fill the blank spots, and we have to address no hearing needed, there will be a spreadsheet for you on that, to just accept the assessor's recommendation, but that'll go before you.
The ones with no hearing needed, my understanding from Kelly is that should be able to be done in one motion?
It, it typically, a, a spreadsheet is presented to you from the assessor with their recommendation.
Their recommendation.
Yeah.
So hopefully that, that will work. So at this point in time, we're nine o'clock to six o'clock tomorrow. So, uh, I think we'll try and be prepared for that, and then, um, um, it looks like that is probably gonna be the, the last of them, so that would be.
Well, I, I don't know how there could be anything else, because the deadline to file a protest was June thirtieth, and everybody that's filed has been scheduled or withdrawn, or we've already heard them all.
Good, so, looks like tomorrow would be it, and, um, that'd be great. And again, uh, I think we know that we've, that we've spent three full days last week, um, we'll have this full day tomorrow.
Right.
We had some partial days before, but the overall amount of hours that we've spent in protest is considerably less than what we did last year. I would suspect half or less.
Don't you think, I was gonna say, way more, way more than?
It's one-sixth.
Half less.
Way less than half?
Whatever I mean.
Six and six.
It was much better this year.
Right. So anyway, we're all happy about that, and.
I'm, I'm learning how to handle it better on my end too. I just, I, I only listen for the motion and the second and the amount, instead of listening to all the words. And that gets me through a little better.
Sometimes we confuse you, probably.
Absolutely, good deal.
But anyway, it has went better, it's been smoother, I think, and so we appreciate everybody's help that's been involved. Okay, anything else?
Not that I can think of. I didn't write anything down.
All right. Kurt? No? No? Sheriff? Yeah, we're gonna meet at the jail in a little while. Jason, do you have anything?
No.
Russ?
Kurt don't have anything, I sure don't.
Yeah, he normally does. Okay, Mike?
Uh, I just met with Lisa and a couple of department heads last week.
I can't, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said I met with Lisa and a couple of department heads last week for budgets, they turned in some really good budgets. That's about it.
Okay. The, uh, last week, uh, I think Ken and I met with, uh, Lisa on, um, two or three budgets, and I thought those all came in, you know, minimal increase or even decrease in the tax asking number, which is kind of my big number that I'm looking at all the time, and so those things I thought looked pretty good. And as she mentioned to us before she left, she'll be in touch with us to cover some more, possibly even this week. I was not able to attend, um, the Heartland Express, uh, meeting that, uh, we had this week, I believe it was on Thursday, because I had to go to Cheyenne this past week, um, so I missed that one. We are having a Panhandle Public Health meeting this Thursday, and, um, you heard about that. I think those are the major ones that I can remember. I don't have anything else at this point.
I've done, done a couple of reviews, met with three departments, I don't remember how many for sure, I think Communication was the last one we met. Really good discussion, and there's, there's some issues that we're, that we're working on, and they're both budgetary and otherwise, and, uh, she's doing a great job of handling stuff, and I'm very impressed with that. Other than that, I have no meetings, I won't have meetings till next month.
Okay. Charlie, if you'll do both your, any board report and, and legislation at the same time?
Yeah, our last, uh, TCD meeting was nothing new on legislation.
Pretty much it, huh? All right, anything else from anyone? If not, we're going to adjourn to the Detention Center.
You are gonna recess, please.
Recess to the Detention Center. And Sheriff, so we'll be meeting you over there, I'm assuming?
Kelly and I, I'm, I won't go to the jail, so I'm.
We'll be doing that, and it's at six eleven, yeah. And Mr. Meyer said he wouldn't be going over there.
He's excused from there?
Yeah.